The collection development issues, we're very aware of, we're addressing them. We're listening to the community, listening to what they need and and we're fixing the issues that you see in some of these numbers. So I do think that as we are more successful with that, we will see more foot traffic in McMahon.
And if I could just piggyback off of that, Elizabeth and Bob, as you know, we've talked a lot about making sure that we are increasing the footprint for the total system. And right now, the proposal, and this is probably a good segue into Tai Su Kim, each location is proposed to increase by 50% as far as space. So that we are trying to be very mindful of making sure that we're being fair and equitable and making sure that we bring programming to all of Bloomfield. And that is really the goal that we have. There are no more questions for Elizabeth, I don't know, are there? Before we move on here or not, okay, we're going to turn it over to our friends at Tai Su Kim for an update on the project. Diana, you there?
They're muted, they need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear well? Okay, uh, but Richard is actually next door, he's attending another Zoom meeting, so he's not with us, but Mohammed and Diana are next to me assisting this presentation. Now, I'm going to show you three building plans. First one is Prosser New Building, second one is Prosser Edition and Renovation, and then the last one is McCann Edition and Renovations. Now, we laid out plan, it's closely possible to Burgos specification, but yeah, because of the building shape, so on, there is some discrepancy one way or the other. But I would say that the purpose of this plan is, number one, you just get the feeling of the building on each side. The second is assisting to a cost estimate of downs and come up with a conceptional cost estimate. So what I'm saying is, the plan I'm gonna share with you is really very early conceptional design plan, it's not really building design. And next step, when referendum pass and so on, and then that's when we really start to designing the building. So I just want to put that upfront that we have not, you know, really detailed worked on everything. So let me start, each after each building plan, I'm gonna ask any questions and then move on to next one. And so, let's start. Okay, this is the the site, you you're familiar with that, there is a building site. And here is a first congregational church here. And interesting enough, there are two big trees up front. And I looked at very carefully, and this is much healthier than the other one. So we are planning on new building, first plan I share with you is a new building on this side, next. So this is a diagram, now you have selected this as a future building site, so I'm just showing you relationship and how important this site is for the Bloomfield civic center area. The orange is the proposed Prosser Library, here's a town hall here, and here is a first Congregational Church here, and here is a center green. So it really, much bigger building than now, two stories high and much longer front dominate. So it will make the entire this area much more recognizable, stronger civic center, I would say. Now, there is a parking here across the group, so we are proposing a footbridge here, and then it naturally become this front of the building, south side of the building become, I would say, a big porch. And in front of that will be a small paid public plaza, I would say. And that's sort of kind of a very nice connecting footbridge, foot traffic from town hall or from the shopping area and so on, and here. Now, I don't remember who mentioned that, or somebody mentioned, what about floor park? And I think it's very positive direction, because we are proposing new parking here, and people, not only public library user, but also any other people be able to develop, go and connecting the floor park back here. So this is not part of our project, but I'm saying there is a good potential to make the floor park part of our future, this library experience, next. Now, Bob, you mentioned about your concern, some of our concern of the hood bridge, and I mentioned to you about previous hard footbridge design, this is a much, much longer footbridge, it's almost 250 feet long, hood bridge, next. And what they do is they bring a section and join together like this. And so you buy this footbridge, a pre fabricated bridge had come together, and then you put this wooden deck. It's remarkable, it's not thirty some years old, still is great shape. This is about four feet high, and I think it's a, it's a very interesting experience from parking across the bridge, and especially, I would say, little children will be a very fragile passage way, next. So here is what you see, a very gentle slope, footbridge and four foot high, and this is about six feet wide, and so it feel no more, you know, risky or anything than regular the curb side walk, next. So let me explain to you floor plan. I think core idea of this building is very natural thing, it's parking, it's footbridge come across, coming here, very traditional, you know, American public buildings have front porch, and has an interest to community area here and main interest to the library here. So if I just go very quickly, here's a community room, toilets and elevator and so on, and this side is a cafe, kitchen and friends of library and cafe here. And I would say this is extension of cafe out here, it's about 14 feet wide, so you can really set up the tables all along here, looking out your town. And then you go in here, and this is a two stories high, quite large space, I call it grand space, it's 48 feet wide and almost 90 feet long, and so it feels really wonderful, you come in, wow, this is something really wonderful. And this side is all grass, so you look out this center green here. And then at the end of this side has a living room and quiet room. And this is a central circulation, and you from left, you're going here, circulation, this is children's area right here. And children's area has a program stated story area and crafts area and and classroom, teaching classroom. And between these two is a teens area, and you know, this teens area can be all grass here, even we can open it, so on, so. So idea is very open, flexible, so when you look at the floor plan, I see only thing is really permanently fixed is this area. This can be all changed, this can be all open. So I think it's the flexibility and openness is the key idea, next. So upstairs, you come up grand stair, again, make the building as openness possible, so all the balcony, it's all open, maybe everything, and steps here. And first in the middle is a quiet study area, group study, and this is conference room, and this is a staff area, all these directors and so on, so. So it's a very simple, very open floor plan. Low level, we're showing here 24 parking spaces here, you, just like you do now, but under the building here come and park. In order to bring this elevator and the stair above the front plane level, front plane is 115 feet, so we introduce a ramp, come up about two feet to this area, so we are above the front plane, so that's, that's a good thing. Can you go back to previous plan? First floor please. So the size wise, first floor is 18,000 square feet, second floor, yes.
Thirty.
Ah?
That's thirty.
So this plan shows 32,800 square feet now, program cost for 31,000 something, so it's very close, it's very close, but if you wish to reduce the building, that's always possible. So that is the general plan of this new Prosser Library, so I would open to questions.
Bob has his hand up.
Going back to the bridge, one question, you said it's six foot wide. Is that wide enough for two wheelchairs to pass each other, one leaving and one coming?
Oh, yes, six feet.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Right. I consider, just want to make sure that that can happen. All right. That's my only question on that. And when I go look at your, the picture you have, the center of town and so forth, I have two comments. Number one, I know where you put what you think are going to be the roundabouts, but my concern is, but my, all right, but my concern is, when I look at this plaza space that you're identifying right there, I think that's actually, yeah.
This is dotted line, this is a roundabout we received from the town, DOT's plan here, this is roundabout, so this does not affect your side at all, but if they proceed to do that, yes, you do have some interest side, but it's a still about 40 feet distance.
But I'm, yeah, but I'm looking at the plaza, and isn't part of that plaza within the right of way?
I mean?
Isn't the plaza within the town, the DOT's right of way?
The building?
The plaza.
Plaza, maybe, I don't know, we have to look into it. Plaza is just pavement, so it's not anything structure here, so even though it's right of way, I'm sure they don't mind to put this public in the area.
The reason I'm raising the question is, I I have seen plans that are slightly different for the roundabouts, and if you move the roundabout further north to where you have the crosswalk?
Yes.
Up to the plaza, I've seen, I I've seen, saw a plan to put the roundabout there rather than back.
Well, we we have to contact town again and make sure, you know, not interfere our plan.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure from the DOT that they're not, not going to do that, because if they do do that, that really affects the plaza, and it might even affect the front of the building.
We'll look into the food.
Diana, I can tell you that that plan that I have, that I gave you, we have not received any updates, town has not received any updates since I sent that to you.
Yeah, that's the one, we only got one.
Right. We haven't received anything from DOT in the meantime.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Her hand up.
Is there a, can there be a spot made where strollers and so forth can be captured? Because if I were bringing my three-year-old from the parking lot to the building, I would need someplace to leave the stroll.
This porch is 14 feet wide, so there's plenty of room, you can leave stroll all along here, and I envision there might be some tables and chairs and so on, and there's plenty of space along here.
Thank you.
Yeah. But just our vision of the interior, this is an open, very airy and sunny place, we feel very wonderful to see this building built with a wood structure, wood beam and wood deck and so on, and that certainly is very much of in harmony with pursuing a green architecture, and you're talking about portable take and geothermal and so on, and and wood structure, and there will be this wonderful way to show it to town's commitment to green architecture, to public. So that is our goal to pursue this design, and we'll work with down to come up with cost estimate based on that.
Wu Dunzi has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. It's, it's my understanding, we're looking more at renovations for both, so I'm a, I'm a bit concerned that time is is being spent on a new processor. I I thought, I thought the directive or the direction in which we're heading in is is that of renovation of of both libraries. It doesn't seem as though, it doesn't seem as though, based on the quick view of the the allocations of funds and which, which shared at the last meeting, that a, a new library would be conducive. I I just don't see that, that it would be conducive.
Let, let me just jump in, there have been no decisions made as of yet, whether or not Prosser will be a new build or renovation, we're still working through that process. And again, all of the information that we've seen today to just early budget plans and numbers, so all of this is subject to change, but the committee has not made a recommendation on, on a particular new build or renovation.
I I understand that, but at the end of the day, what I also understand is that time is money. And so the time that's being spent on exploring a new processor, I think, I think it's, it's to our disadvantage because of the fact that, you know, I don't think that we can afford to have a new processor as well as adding and renovating the McMahon as well. Now, now, maybe if I look at the numbers that were shared at the last meeting briefly, maybe I could get a better understanding, but I I just don't think that it's conducive. I I think that, that we are wasting time, just as we had with trying to determine location. And so, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Tai Su, you want to move on to the next option, please?
Well, the next one is we're going to share with you plan addition and renovation of Prosser Library, well, this is a section of this new building, two stories high space, and children's area, and upper level and the lower level, there is a parking space. Okay, let's move on, next one. Okay, this plan is keeping existing processor and add on to this building. Now, I show you, existing building is like this, this is existing building. Now, the most logical thing to do is the new entrance coming in between new addition and also here. So this is a new circulation space here, and because of this the new entrance here, the bridge will be further up to this side here. So you come in up here and you end up these locations. And there is another entrance from this side, from the, the park side coming in here. So it is a really a control wise a problem having the two entrances, but because of this site condition, it is become like this. So let me just take you quickly, you're coming main entrance here, most people will come in this way and it's circulation, and there is an adult or general information, that sort of thing, all going to be here. And back here, this is the community room and its support facility here. And then you come this side, it's a cafe here, and there's a small deck outside, and then additional adult spaces here, like a live living room and quiet area. Now, we house children and teens within this existing building. So you see, children's area is here, if you come in here, you're sort of coming, children's area here, and children's support, like story and classroom back here, and teen is located here in between. So as you can compare with the previous plan, it really is broken up, because it's not one continuous flexible space, next. Upstairs, if you come up this way, there is a small area, two stories high, and this side is, is all administration space here, and this side is additional adult area, study room back here, and some stacks here and study area here. And we have not used any of added space, and we do need second main library, so it might connect to existing stair. So this is the plan, again, as you can see, visibility is not that great, and it is, is broken up in small areas. The low level, because of existing, low level is below front range, and so we are saying at this time, you have better than that low level, because it's not legally usable, so you're giving up this mouth glory, and then new entrance is coming here, again, we go up two feet and arrive to small lobby, go upstairs. It does show 27 parking space under the building. So this is the plan, can you go back to previous plan? So this plan shows about 33,340 square feet, it's bigger than new building, because you are using existing buildings, so inefficiencies and and so on, so I think usable space for this plan, my guess is less than the new plan, even though this scriptage is bigger than new building. So with that, open to questions.
Wu Dunzi has her hand up.
Thank you, Nancy. I I really don't have my hands up to ask a question, but I I do want to revisit my last statement, and I I want to be clear as to why that statement was made. Now, on March the 18th, last Thursday, there was an article in the Hartford Current with regards to our expansion plans, and within that article, specific reference that what is for certain is that we plan to expand and modernize. Okay, and it, and it specifically states that those proposed expansions are subject to a referential. So I'm, I'm a bit confused, because I know that we hadn't made a determination on this committee, but I was a bit taken aback by having read this article. So I I need a better understanding as to exactly what we're doing here, because it seems to be contradicting. We're telling the public that we're looking to expand and we're looking to modernize it. Okay, but within this committee, it it seems to still be up in the air. And and I have, I have concerns as it relates to that, because specifically, it says that the plan is to increase the size of both branches by about 50% at their current locations instead of building new at another location. So to me, this is indicating, and this is what the, the community is reading, is that we look to expand both and and not to build new. So so this is what, what drove my, my original question, and and I would really appreciate a, a response to that, because to me, it's, it's, it's contradicting. Thank you.
You have Lois and Ava.
Well, let me just respond to Wu Dunzi's question and statement. Wu Dunzi, the, the terminology of expand and modernize is not signified that it's going to be a renovation. Expand and modernize means we are going to expand the size of the building, we, it doesn't mean that it's going to be new or renovated, it's just going to be expanded, it's going to be more space.
Modernized.
Modernized.
Modernized is the key word.
Yeah, modernized means newer, they're going to be new, they're going to be
Yes.
in the first century. Anyway, I don't want to get into a debate with that right now, that's
Okay, then.
It, it's not really the place for that, but again, we have not made any statements about both locations being renovated or one being new and one being, well, we did say that McMahon would be renovated, the recommendation, but we have not made a decision on Prosser. And that's why we're going through this process of looking at it with respect to the timeframe. Our timeframe is going to be the same, we, we have to shoot for the referendum dates and the, so whether we decide tonight or tomorrow, we're still shooting for the same date, so time is money is again, so that we have it ready to be voted on for November. Lois, please.
Tai Su Kim, my question is, again, is it going to be more energy efficient over time and therefore cheaper to build new or to make an addition to an old library which may have been built to different types of specifications?
Yes, well, as I said, you know, we try to best we can laying out the Burgos program specification on plan, and as I said, addition and renovation of existing is inherently inefficient, because we are working with existing constraint and trying to fit rooms. So if you need for new and renovation, addition option, you really have to gross square footage wise, it's going to be bigger with this addition renovation. And as you can see, plan, I'm sure there are other plans, but there is this constraint of, of planning, because you see, existing building is a lot high, about two feet higher than this addition, because we have steps, existing building steps, and you come up almost five feet from here, 222 is 125, so we cannot do that now. So we have, again, about two feet differences because between existing and old, so there is another constraint. So I, I would say, yes, it's, there are a lot of constraint, as you can see floor plan, of trying to fit in to existing building, and this is an old building and old, energy wise, I dare to say, shit building, and so. And so efficiency wise, building, new building is much, much more efficient and cost effective too, in the long run, I would say.
That's that was my question, not so much with respect to the design, but with respect to the energy use over time.
Yeah.
Any more questions or?
Ava and then Mark.
Okay.
Since we're chatting about money, as I look at this design that's a renovation and the constraints on the spaces, the fact that it's no longer as flexible, the fact that there are, from a library point of view, serious constraints on line of sight. I think everybody needs to keep in mind that this will be more expensive in staffing down the line. There are staffing requirements to make sure, not only for service points, but for safety. And when you have a design like this that isn't as open and isn't as efficient and doesn't have the flow, you will be paying for more staff and that's an expenditure that's forever.
Thank you. Mark?
Tai Su, the new building, the bridge and the porch and the plaza, you don't need to go back to that, please, to stay on the, yeah. Is eloquent. It's just beautiful. There's so much potential there. I really love that whole thing, how it all comes together. With the addition and renovation, I can see why you've moved the bridge to that sort of joint between the new and the old work. But can you talk a little bit about why you couldn't have the bridge down at the south side and have still sort of develop a porch or something with this addition renovation scheme? Does it? Does it not work and why it might, why it wouldn't work?
I mean, let's let's try this design on this paper. If you move this bridge up front
Right.
and porch, certainly you cannot build the porch like previous one because this is existing brick building. You don't want to continue that. So we end up very partial porch here. And then circulation space somewhere up front, right? And you have end up this long L shape room here. And again, I said, it handicap access wise, this difficult to come in here. So you end up entrance here for community room. So it has become a very awkward kind of two entrances. One is here, the other one is way back here. At least this one has a straight sideline. So that's why avoiding that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted that explained a little more. Thank you.
Construction wise, can I see your second floor plan? You see, I show this one roof, right? But actually, this has a gable roof like this, right? So what you have to do is you end up building a flat roof of this side because you don't want the snow piling up here. So you have, you're going to create false big roof area back this side. That's another expense and future problem.
So there's going to be money spent there on roof reconfiguration without gaining any additional space?
Tai Su, in the interest of time, can you go over to the third?
Yes, let's move to, okay. My plan, now, this program specification is called for Miller's small additions, like 1800 square feet. I tried to close to that speculation and then let it up. So let's let's go with this existing building is is like this, right? This side is existing building. And this is proposed new building here. So let's lay out how this might work. Main entrance is still here. And we keep the back entrance from parking lot here. So we have a straight sideline and there's a circulation is right here. And I located the children, the other side here and has a story and also classroom here. And this side, the teen space here and staff location, staff offices here. So I put this adult up front because a program called for small community room. And then there is collaborative teaching spaces, so on. And then cafe up front and some service area such as cafeteria and so on, so on. So this is sort of minimum dimension here. And then entrance here, and this is all adult library space. And then living room here and quiet space here. So this seems to be a minimum practical dimensions. So when I added up this coverage, it's end up existing 6200 square feet and new 3400 square feet. This is and 96, 9,600 square feet. So it is almost over 1200 square feet. So it's just nature of adding small pieces, not very efficient. And I don't think we can really bring down to 8,000 square feet. I think maybe we can do it 9,000 square feet. That's my guess. So I think to make this one work, and I really like to have this adult up front so that from Ruth's Avenue, this is all grass so that evening, you know, people can really see inside adult area or the library and so on. And children's area is the backside. So that's the plan and it will be bigger than programmed gross coverage.
Any questions or thoughts on that?
Bob hats his hands up.
Yes.
Thank you. Tai Su Kim, when I go to the town's assessors website, it says that the existing McMahon library is 5,912 square feet.
I don't know where we got the 6,6200.
I don't know where that came from because.
We just, we maybe scaled it and.
We got we got some plans for the floor plan. That's what we use for the 6200.
Our architecture, well, your architecture plan said that 6200 is existing square meters.
All right, well, I can only tell what the assessor's website says.
Okay.
That might be including only interior spaces, but possibly our existing skirt includes the exterior walls as well. So that might be the difference.
Oh, it said growth, it said the growth is 5912. So I don't know. But I just wanted to point that out. My other comment is that I like what you've done in terms of where you're adding and where you're changing things around. Because currently, as I remember, the inside of McMahon, it's basically all open. So you have all the flexibility you need there, which is good. That my own comments.
Well, we hear is this is all open. This is all open. And this is all open and circulation space is right in the middle. You observe everything here. And this is teen area and the staff room is here. I'm sure there are the plans here. But as I said at the beginning, the purpose of this plan is really what size of addition works to meet bogus specification. And so our first test does show that really 8,000, making 8,000 square feet of gross building is very difficult for you. That's what it to me telling this plan.
Lois, I see your hand up.
I'm not good at visualizing spaces, but it looks to me as if the front spaces are a little cramped. I understand we are under budget constraints. But if the whole front facade were moved forward 10 feet, would that make a more comfortable space, both in the adult area in the back where the community room is? Move toward Blue Hills Avenue 10 feet, the whole front facade.
Well, well, this is, this is almost 30 feet, 40 feet wide here.
I'm going to have a building, the setback, right? The front setback, I think, is 25, I believe, along Blue Hills. Oh, we can go too close.
I think we're not intruding into a setback line. I would check that. We'll check that.
Thank you.
There was a situation that we cannot go too too close to Blue Hills Avenue. I think it's 25 feet that we need to keep distance from this, from Blue Hills to the building.
Michelle?
One idea is, you know, make much more stronger statement to Ruth Hill Avenue. By adding new building, we are able to create much more border and open, glossy front facade to that. That's, I think, is right thing to do to make a big impact on McMahon.
Michelle?
Are our estimators, Mr. Downs and Mr. Patrick, still here?
Yes.
I would just like to run my conceptual comment by them and anyone else who's interested. We have heard comments about interest in solar panels on the roof and geothermal as far as investigations are concerned. And I would be interested in investigating them, although I'm not wedded to any of them. I am committed to energy and environmental best practices. And from the standpoint of many climate change concepts, the jury's still out on a lot of those. So what I'm interested in, and I know part of your work will be to investigate those things, and I absolutely support that. But what I am looking for to be incorporated in the building with regard to environment and energy in particular, are practical proven, cost effective additions to the building, both from the standpoint of initial investment and efficacy and cost over the long term. So I would presume that you will be looking at those things and will appreciate if you do.
Absolutely, we will. We will be looking into that.
Thank you so much. My second conceptual comment goes to actually option two, which addresses some of my conceptual concerns that I've had from the beginning of the project with regard to perceived and or recognizable entrances from the standpoint of wayfinding for those persons who would be pedestrians in the town center. One of the things that the Economic Development Commission has heartily proposed and supported is pedestrian usage with regard to important landmarks in town center. And only in concept option two, do I see an actual entrance that, and I could have missed something, by the way, from the standpoint of these plans that are brought forward. I realize they're preliminary. But only in option two, do I see an actual, very evident entrance from Bloomfield Avenue that would attract an pedestrian's eye. The other concerns that I have that may be there but are not evident to my eye are drop off loading, school bus access, other than from the parking lot. Although I see that in the cross sections, maybe loading is accommodated. The other thing that I have a concern about is I realize the footbridge shown is in a stylistic way, probably conceptual. But I hope it wouldn't be a stylistic example of what we're looking at because that reminds me of something institutional or even correctional. And from the standpoint of being a fit with the environment that we are looking to protect and showcase, I would have concerns about that. The option two concern also is it's looking the most viable from the standpoint of suiting the questions and limitations that I have. However, I'm concerned about its cost and square footage. So price tag is always a problem. So those are my two conceptual comments.
Well, let me answer just one concern about interest. I think option one, new building has a much, much stronger entry presence. Look at the floor plan. Entire front porch is an entrance. You don't, the the whole thing and that there is a right place for pedestrian walkway because you see the two crossway and plaza and you go into the porch. So entire porch is entrance. It's not just door. And I think option two is away from that crosswalk area and it's just going to be a door. You know, even we designed something much more prominent to do. But I would say this is much, much stronger interest and the location of major pedestrian walkway is the right place for promoting pedestrian walk.
Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I want to thank Tai Su and your team for taking seven months of information and really turning the corner here into, you know, concepts that we can comment on, that we can see, we can look at. And now we can continue to work on this and most importantly, assign some cost estimates to this. And it's and it's going to be a back and forth process from here. But now we have things we can work with and everything we've been working on is, you know, is in here. And so we can really, we really have the tools now to to move forward and develop what suits all of our needs, you know, financially as well as design wise. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tai Su. I don't see any other hands. If not, we'll move on. Item five on the agenda, future meetings. Tai Su, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. April 7th is our next meeting and then we meet on the 21st of April. Item six is comments from the committee. Any new comments? I see a hand. Bob Berman. You're muted, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. I have a couple of comments. Number one, I also want to thank Tai Su Kim and his staff because they've given us a lot of information and pulled together everybody's thinking on what needs to be in the library, where where things need to be and how things flow. And they've given us a lot of food for thought. And I really want to thank you for that. My other comment is that when the estimating takes place, which is going to be starting, I presume, within the next couple of weeks, they'll need to take a look at the actual figures in terms of space, whether it's a new prosser, renovation, an add, the prosser, and the change in the renovation and add at Wittenberry when they do the cost estimates because two of those three have changed significantly. And that's going to make a difference. And in terms of the presentation we had earlier from Tai Su Kim, and we have it again, and what sent to us yesterday about the potential project cost. We all know that's a plan, that's really a guestimate, not even based on on any cost estimate or find out what current costs are. That's why I'm really looking. That's why I'm really looking forward to when the cost estimating comes back and gives us the prices of all the things that we need to have in there, but some of the optional things we're looking at, like solar panels, geothermal, and some other things. Because that's gonna give us a better handle on what this project's really gonna probably cost. Until then, I don't think we have any idea what the real numbers are, or are gonna be. So any discussion we have about, oh, this is over budget, or this looks like we can do it, I think at this point is totally immaterial, because it's irrelevant. We don't have any real numbers to consider. And I think everybody needs to keep that in mind when they talk about which is more costly, more cost efficient, because we have no idea at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Leah?
Yeah, and to follow up with what Bob said, I completely agree. I mean, and I wanted to make sure everyone knows that the Space Planning Subcommittee is fully committed to making the plans work for whatever the budget ends up being, or for whatever we decide as a committee to recommend. We have lots of wonderful ideas about how to make the spaces work for the cost. We understand that, you know, that's a huge a huge consideration, so please, you know, you're welcome to come to our subcommittee meetings. They are at 8:00 AM on Saturdays, but I just want to ensure that people understand how committed we are as a subcommittee to making that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, I don't see any other hands up. And I would just sort of piggyback off of what Leah just said, and that I said at the beginning of the meeting, the committee is working extremely hard trying to be as efficient, as fair, and as equitable as we can throughout this process. And I've served on a number of building committees, and I have to say, I've never seen this much work from volunteers. Typically, you see the staff carrying the load. But what we're doing here, we've got our volunteers going above and beyond. And, you know, again, I might say that we may not agree on all the issues, but we have to agree that we're all trying to produce the best project for the town of Bloomfield, and we want to serve all of Bloomfield. And, you know, people will criticize no matter what we do, but that's okay, as long as we're giving our best effort and trying to be as fair and equitable as possible. I said that, you know, there have been twenty meetings with this committee, more than twenty meetings with the subcommittees, folks who work and putting in the time, and everyone on this committee is invited to all of the subcommittee meetings. That's where the real work is done, and if you're interested, you've got comments, you have concerns, please show up, because everyone is invited, and we want to have your input. I'm going to move it on to the public comments. Nancy, do we have anyone?
Yes, we have Stan Kasperson.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that you're running a little late. For the information of the committee, I put together a little table, which is the information that I want to put into you tonight. I don't know if it was distributed to you or not. I also made the request to the chairman that that table be included in the minutes of this meeting. My point is to talk about costs, but much more specifically the bases for the costs. And I make the comments with the perspective of the very recently completed major project, Human Services Facility in the town of Bloomfield, just two years ago, not even that long. That Human Services Building was fifty-five thousand square feet, built on a project basis for twenty-two million dollars. A new library, an estimate, the only one I saw prior to tonight, a new library is thirty-five thousand square feet, estimated at twenty-eight million dollars. That got my attention. And the first thing I did was I made up a dummy number. I just took the ratio of the dollars of the project cost to the square footage of the building included. That came out to be four hundred and five dollars per square foot for the Human Services Facility project. Seven hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot for the Prosser Option One project. On a building only cost, looking back at the Human Service Facility building that was bid and built at two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot, the estimate that TSKP is proposing is four hundred. Four hundred could very well be right. But I think the committee, and the town, and the taxpayers are going to want to know, what are the bases for four hundred versus two hundred and eighty? I escalated using TSKP's four percent per year, the two eighty, and I came out with three fifteen. It would take nine years of escalation to get from two eighty to four hundred at four percent per year. I'd also note, for the committee's benefit, this is easy, with the estimates, the costs that I saw, each ten dollar per square foot would cost three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in the final contract. Then I said to myself, what's in the project? The projects besides the building? Well, for the Human Services Facility, there was demolition and abatement of a ninety-two thousand square foot former three-thirty Park Avenue steel, concrete, brick, partial two-story building. For a demolition of the current Prosser Library, it's around twenty-three thousand square foot and a wooden warehouse, which is the former Riley Building. For the Human Service Facility, it has, in terms of building features, a large gymnasium, a community great room, two large kitchens, a cafe with a patio, a large interior courtyard, and a two-story section. Until tonight, I hadn't seen any design specifics for the library, but you can make a comparison in your head if you want. My point is, understand what is in the costs and how they're developed. At some time, Ty-Su Kim should be asked to provide their bases for their principal costs, and I put a list of those proposed list of those into the table that I sent to the chairman. Question to be asked is, of course, how can the library cost be reduced? Obviously, if the building is smaller, it costs less. If the building is more, it costs more. But what has been stated over and over for the community is that there is probably not a minimum size that you want to think about. It's the size that the community needs. In this case, split between two facilities. The central question remains, why is this library building proposed to be so much more expensive than the Human Services Facility? Now, the good news
Stan, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but you're beyond your five minutes. You're on seven minutes, and
Last statement, the last, the good news is, the estimator for this project for the library is the constructor for the Human Services Facility. That commonality is going to pay dividends, I hope. Thank you for your indulgence. I do hope you get the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nancy?
No one else, no one else from the public is here to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just answering a question. Now we have a floor plan, we have a professional cost estimate, so they will come up with the cost of this building. We will narratively specify what kind of building this might be like, so so let's wait and see, what's the number coming back?
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I know, but we're done. We're entertaining a motion to adjourn.
But I'd like to make a request prior to us doing so.
Sure.
Is it possible, if you go forward to the committee members, the information that Mr. Kasperson sent for our consideration and review?
Yes.
Yes, it's gonna be part of the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you so much.
All right, so Mark, do you want to?
Yeah, just quickly, I want to thank Stan for all the enthusiasm and participation. It's, I believe it's obvious to everybody that cost discussions are preliminary. We're not even really ready to have them yet, as Ty-Su said. But I want to, I'm so confident that we have assembled the right team between all of us here and the professionals to answer all of those questions as we go through the costing process. Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Bob. Second, Lois?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Thank you for your patience and time tonight, and we will be in touch. Good night.